Okay, we'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I will call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renetta McCourt. Renetta, good morning.
Good morning. We have no exonerations minutes for August 4th, 2021. Vouchers, General County Fund, 215,000, 516, 12. Magistrate Court, 73, 05, 911, 359. Chestnut Ridge, 4,006, 1984. Camp Muffley, 12,002, 5672. Mason Dixon Park, 3,120, 3. Recreation Levy, 1,900. Reallocated coal, $4,000. Accessor's valuation, 2,123. Payroll, 1,00677, 19406. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, 18,15803. 911, 1,073428. Chestnut Ridge Park, 58474. Camp Muffley, 76526. Mason Dixon Park, 60385. Assessor's valuation, 175. For a voucher total of 1,943,18298. We have a budget revision for in-house approval for other buildings. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for August 11th, 2021.
Motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Separate fiduciary order?
Yeah, we are also setting a date for an administrative closing. A hearing, a public hearing on administrative closing of 53 estates. That's going to be set for August the 13th, I'm sorry, October the 13th.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything else, Renetta?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is introduction to new employees, personnel changes. Do we have any?
No.
Comments from the public. Now open the comments from the public session. Anybody from the public wishing to address the commission may come forward. Just give us your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, go ahead and close the comments from the public. Moving along quickly. Becca Fink Clark, W Extension Agent, 4H Youth Development, and Emma Solers.
Don't get to the wall. Yeah, you don't want to knock that down.
Oh wow, that's cool.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm gonna introduce, I don't know, I'm gonna turn the podium over to her. I don't know if you wanna maybe hand that up to them. You can look at this maybe. Okay, so, good morning and thank you so much for having me. It's always a pleasure to visit you all and talk about the great things that 4H is happening in 4H. But today, I'm especially excited to introduce Ms. Emma Solers. Emma is a 4H member. She's been in 4H for two years. It started at kind of a weird time, so she hasn't had a chance to go to camp yet. You always hear me talk about camp. And we didn't have any 4H club meetings at all this past year because of the pandemic. But she, one of the things that she do in 4H is you pick projects at the beginning of the year. And projects are self-based, based on interests. And you kinda do them throughout the year and then show your project work at the end of the fair. Well, the fair is kind of a challenge too this year. But Emma took it upon herself to do two fabulous 4H projects this year and learn about two different things. One is her family tree. And so she made this amazing kind of family tree thing. She did a lot of research. And the other is about historical markers, so I'm gonna let Emma tell you about what she did.
Good morning, Emma.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Emma Virginia Solers and I am a fifth grade student at Mason Dixon Elementary School. I am also a Montague County 4H member. For one of my 4H projects this year, I have been learning about West Virginia history. One of my lessons in my project book was about state historical road markers. I started to look for these signs as we were driving around the area. And that is when I decided I wanted to travel all over Montague County to see our, all of our markers. I went to, I went to West Virginia Division of Culture and History website and I got a list of markers in our county. And their location. My, my family and I set out to find each markers. We knew some would be missing. But when we actually drove around, we, we, I, we had found the county. The, around the county, we had found even more markers were gone. I'd created a county map for my 4H project showing where the markers are located. And which ones are missing. Most of the county line markers are missing. As, as well as the end of the Mason Dixon survey. Goodaba Warpath, Harmony Grove, Montague, Montague High School. West Virginia University, Jones raid. Willie Wade White, Morgantown marker. Would, that should be here in our courthouse square. I had my mom take pictures of me at each marker to create a photo album of the ones that we had saw. I had a lot of fun doing this project this year and learned a lot about my county's history while doing it. After I saw how many markers were missing, I decided to write letters to all of our county representatives to share what I'd learned. And ask for their, for their help in getting 14 missing markers replaced. I believe that these markers need to be replaced so the citizens and visitors of, to our county can learn about our wonderful history and its importance to our state. Shortly after mailing out my letters, I had received a response from Senator Mike Caputo. And he was also, he was more than happy. He was more than happy to pass on my information to Matt, Mr. Matt McGrill, who is in charge of the historical markers program in the West Virginia Division of Culture and History. I am currently waiting for my response from Mr. McGrill about 14 missing, missing markers. So that he can get them, so he can get them replaced. I'm here today to ask for your help and assistance in seeing that these markers are replaced. So future generations can learn about our importance and, and our important past, past. Thank, thank you for your time and allowing me to speak about my, about my project.
Thank you very much, Emma. So there's 14 total that are missing?
Yes.
Okay. I understand you're a relative of Delegate Statler?
Yes.
Because he had relayed to me that there is a Randall Reed Smith that works with the State Division of History and Cultural. And he has relayed that Mr. Smith has, has asked that this information be provided to him and at the state level and that they would, they would look into and take on the chore of replacing them. So you've already reached Charleston.
Wow.
They've heard your request and it's not usual. We get such a fast request from people like this. But we certainly, we certainly will continue to make sure that they honor your request and get these replaced. I'm not sure of the timing or anything like that, but Delegate Statler was supposed to be here this morning and he had, he had to be called away. But I'm very impressed with your efforts and your work and your research. It's, it's, it's really cool. So Tom, do you have anything to say?
Go ahead.
Just, we were all very impressed with your letter and your ambition and your, a lot of people do projects just to get them done. And that's obviously not what you were doing. You've taken a real initiative here and it's really nice to see. When I was your age, there was no way I could have gotten up in front of a body like this and given a presentation like you just did. We're very impressed and hopefully you can continue on this path and stay in Mon County because we can certainly use older people with the same initiative and stick to it as that you have. So hopefully you stick around and keep giving back to the community like this. It's really great. Thank you.
As I told you earlier, I said I was a guidance counselor for 32 years. And every once in a while you run around, come across some students who really are exceptional. And first, as I told you, I didn't even know those markers existed. Let alone I just learned that there's one supposed to be here and we don't have that. So I think you have really impressed the three county commissioners and we will work with Joe and make sure. And when we get all the information, if you would allow us, we'd like to put you on our group list. So you know what's going on the entire time and then you can always do an update on your project. And, you know, as, as you know Jeff said, we have a lot of people come and do a project and leave. But to know where we were before and how we are today, we can't forget that. And what you have done is woke us up and reminded us of that.
Thank you very much, Emma. Would you like to picture with the commission?
Yes.
Actually, I don't know. We'll come down here.
And you still haven't had a meeting with the club, which is even more.
I know.
You did this on your own.
The major initiative with that is just amazing. We just displayed the four inches of it in the window of Main Street Morgantown. And we had, I mean, we didn't have as many as we would have with the fair, but they did a wonderful job.
Yeah.
You tell us where you want us.
This is good. It's good. Shaky, okay, good. Thank you.
We will stay in touch with you all so you know exactly what's going on. You should be very proud.
Of course, good job.
Now we're gonna top that. Colleen Coon, Grants.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have requests for reimbursement. The first one is for the VOCA grant in the amount of $8,232.66. The next one is for the Governor's Highway Safety Program Impaired Driving in the amount of $2,890.12. Safe Communities in the amount of $2,512.94. And the final one is the SEEP Grant in the amount of $2,265.96.
Move for approval?
Second.
You have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen.
Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Renetta?
I have one item that came in on Monday. We got a letter from Jessica Harmoning. She's the head coach of the Morgantown Composite Team, which is a mountain bike club. And it's to thank the commission for this Mason Dixon Park. I'll, I'll read the letter. It's short. I want to take a moment to thank the county commissioners for the amazing space that is Mason Dixon Historical Park. My name is Jessica Harmoning and I'm the head coach for a local youth mountain biking team, the Morgantown Trail Hawks. For the past three seasons, we have used Mason Dixon Historical Park for at least half of our practices. The addition of the trails in recent years has made this venue even more enjoyable for the team. My team consists of over 50 kids in grades six through 12 from all over Montague County and even beyond. We would not be able to deliver the quality programming and youth development to these student athletes without the use of county parks like Mason Dixon. I wanted to be sure to send a word of thanks for having spaces that allow us to get more kids on bikes.
Very nice.
Very nice.
Tom, any correspondence?
Yes, I did pass on, we did receive a letter from Luann Hendershot, President of Acorn Village, who had flooding there and she was gonna be here, but she could not be here today. And they are formally requesting funding to help resolve their issue. And I said that we would, I would make it public that, and put it in our request funds.
Okay. Jeff, do you have any correspondence?
Nope.
Unfinished business. None?
No, sir.
Okay. New business. To consider for approval an engagement letter for Perry and Associates for preparation of the fiscal year 21 financial statement for the Montague County Commission. Do we have a motion?
Move for approval?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, this letter of engagement, they'll be engaged at a labor hour rate of $100 an hour in our big C, 20,000, which is consistent with previous years. Anything else to add, Renetta? Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Consideration to approve proposals from Schindler Elevator Corporation for annual preventative maintenance contracts with respect to the elevator equipment located at the Montague County Justice Center and Montague County Extension Services and 4H Center. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? This, the extension building agreement is just simply being novated over to the commission. It previously was being handled by Myland Park. And then the Justice Center one is a renewal of a current agreement. So the Justice Center one's 18,000 a year and the Extension Building one's 3,000 a year. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration of requisition number 56 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Yes, second.
Okay. Details, Renetta?
The requisition is for $706,920.88.
Yes, and that's less the $100,000 statutory lien and the tax administrative fee. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consider setting a date for a public hearing regarding the resolution recommending approval of the request by Croatia's Morgantown Holdings LLC to amend West Run Planning District zoning map designation from low density, R1, and high density, R4 residential to general commercial, C2, of property legally described as Union Tax Map 21 parcels. 1.1, 1.3, 1.4, and 2. Do we have a motion?
So move.
A motion to approve the dates? We have a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, and the actual dates, Renetta?
The dates, the first reading will be on August 18th, which is next Wednesday. And the second reading will be on August 25th. Second reading of public hearing will be August 25th.
Okay. We have those dates. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration to approve appointments to the Mountaineer Trail Network Recreation Authority. Renetta, would you describe those appointments?
Two applications. Well, we had a recommendation from Friends of Cheat. They have recommended our actual Parks Director, JR Petsko. And I did talk to him. He's, obviously he's been involved in mountain biking for years. I did talk to him and he, he feels like he has the time to do that. So if you would want to do that. And then the president and CEO of the CVB, Susan Riddle, is, is also interested. And that's kind of a natural fit because of the tourism aspect, so.
Okay.
I move both JR and Susan Riddle to be nominated.
Enthusiastically second.
To be appointed.
Appointed.
And we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Does anybody like to report? Jimmy Smith has had a meeting in Harrison County. He did ask me to report that they had 258 damage assessment reports as of this morning from the rain event of July 29th that they will be submitting to the state. So I'd like to report that on Jimmy's behalf, so. Next, reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just a couple of things. Wanted, this was the most pleasant meeting that I can recall with Ms. Emma here. And then also with a nice letter regarding the trails, I get a nice warm, warm feeling today. That's great. As Commissioner's Cor just said, with the damage assessments, today was the last day to turn those in. So I know several people spoke to me that they've just taken care of things on their own and haven't filled out the forms. If anyone's watching this and can still do that, by the end of the day, there's a certain monetary threshold we have to hit in order to make ourselves eligible for FEMA support. So please fill those in. Even if you were insurance covered, your loss, it still would go to the totality of the loss in the county. So please get those sent in today rather quickly. That's all.
Tom?
Yeah, a couple of things. I met with Susan Riddle and I'm excited to tell you that we've had 12 applications in various stations, stages of completion for our Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund. We did approve our first one, which was the AAU National Diving Championship. Just to give you an idea of once the reviewing is the Country Roads Barbecue Clash, the Mountaineer Comic Con, and the Cheat Lake Regatta. So it is working, so we have 12 right now that have applied. Then I'll just also promote the Gata Regatta is at Cheat Lake, August 28th from 12 to 4. And it will show, have three shows. Actual, what would you call them, just water shows that they've never done before. So we're doing that at Cheat Lake and they're all free. Next thing and finally, Saturday was an amazing day. Over at the Mountaineer Mall, Pantry Plus More, along with numerous organizations that helped fund it. We delivered 1,272 book bags. We also did hygiene bags, milk juice, 75 pounds of food, bomba socks, clothes, jackets. 13 COVID shots. But an enormous amount of people went to the Dental Express Smile and they set up. So it was really successful. We did 189 more backpacks yesterday that go to the families that have no transportation. We drove them to. So we did a total of 1,461. If you have not received a backpack and you're still looking for one, it can go to pantryplusmore.org. Sign up and we will start filling out. We only had them 1,500, so we were fortunate. We had enough, but we're gonna make more to make sure that every child has one. And I just asked to talk later after, after you.
Yeah, I, one thing, yeah, we'll let Sean start the lead on.
Yes.
That final discussion.
Yeah, there is discussion that, the other thing.
Unless you want me to open it?
No.
Yeah.
Since last week, on Thursday, I had lunch with the 911 MECA staff, Joe Statler and Ron Lidle. And then we did a site visit to the Westover flood site. On Friday, we had staff reports and a broadband initiative full committee meeting. Monday, I had a broadband call. Tuesday, had a site visit with Bridge Road, whoops, I think this is last week's agenda. Anyhow, I didn't, didn't update part of my notes. It's been a very, it's been a very busy week. So I do want to, in general, I want to report that in regards to the Westover flood victims assistance, I want to shout out to Joe Statler, Ron Lidle, Jimmy Smith from our MECA 911 Department, Mike Fortney from our 911 Department, Justin White, who's a businessman in Mon County, and Mayor Johnson, who all had provided assistance to help clean out a couple houses over in Westover that were damaged by the flood. And the time was of the essence because these houses needed to be stripped of all, all the wooden stuff that had been affected so that it wouldn't start molding. These people could have lost their whole house. So we, we provided, the assistance was provided to anybody that asked for it. And I want to thank these individuals for reaching out and helping to that regard. There were 15 people there helping on Friday, so that was really impressive. And we talk about the things that this community does with the, the back-to-school bash, people helping out people who were affected by the flood. It's really, really impressive. Tonight, we have a broadband discussion. It's a discussion with our consultants and our, our public officials, all the mayors and their council members and anybody from the community that wanted to participate. The meeting, the meeting will be on our regular YouTube channel. And it's really just to give everybody an update on where we're at with the whole project and where, where we're going. So that the communities would be aware of it, the individual municipalities would be aware of it so it can inform their decisions going forward in regards to broadband choices. The last thing, as the commissioners alluded to, is we, we as a commission felt we needed to have a response about the request for ARP, community input. So I, I'll go ahead and give my input as far as my feelings and then the commissioners can jump in. But we've received a number of requests, inquiries in whether we are going to have public input component in regards to how we spend the 20.4 million that we received in American Rescue Plan funds. I'm just one commissioner, but I don't believe that we need extraordinary input regarding these funds for a number of reasons. I'm gonna lay those out. First and foremost, we are elected to make these decisions. I take the trust that the citizens have put into us seriously. And I can assure, just like every penny spent in this county, it will be logical, strategic, and completely transparent. In addition, from the beginning, we have received guidance about these particular funds. And that main guidance, the simplest way to describe it was that the money that could be used for water, sewer, and broadband projects. In our county, we, we can spend all those dollars just on broadband alone. And the commission has taken on the broadband project for the whole county, for all the municipalities to kind of map our county out and see what the best routes are going forward to light up the whole county. So those dollars can be used just for broadband alone. There, and also about some of the other things that the dollars could be used for, it's really unclear. I was at County Commissioner's Association meeting a couple of weeks ago. And every question that was brought up, can we use it for this? The auditor's office was, well, maybe, but we're not sure. You better check. Well, maybe what we're not sure. So I think that the clearest path forward is to stick with our path of the water, sewer, and broadband. Secondly, you may or, may or may not agree with all the spending that's going on in Washington, but these dollars have to be paid by future generations. So we have one shot to get the best advantage of these dollars. And to do that, we think that the dollars spent on economic development will, will go a long way to making sure that we can get the, the best use of these particular dollars. Broadband's economic development, water and sewer projects are economic development. And economic development by the use of these funds will benefit all of our citizens regardless of their, where they live and their, their circumstances. Again, I want to ensure the public that the commission will be fully accountable for every penny. We haven't avoided this issue. Every week, we provide a public comment section. Unlike a lot of other entities, we've been here through the whole COVID. Any, we've been available for the last two years. And I think here's, I'm pretty sure we're probably the only entity in the state that had, that can make that claim. So we've remained open and transparent. The commission can be contacted by email and public or, you know, walk up to us on the street. So we really feel like we have a process in place for people to suggest stuff. We're just not going to have a formal input process. Also, unlike other entities, I want to point out that we have a yearly grant program where we do solicit input from the community for dollars that we set aside each year. And on an average, we spend about $1.2 million a year on these projects. And these are projects that benefit all areas of the community. So you may agree or disagree with our thought process, but we just ask that you judge us by our results. And I really think once we get further into actually applying these funds to some projects, people are gonna see that we're making, we're gonna make wise decisions with these dollars. In some instances, these dollars can be turned over two or three times to make sure that we get the best benefit out of them. So anyhow, that's, those are my thoughts.
Just sort of a follow-up. What I've noticed in my seven-plus months now on this commission is that we're a very deliberate body. And we won't so much as spend a dime unless we know we have the authority to do so. We get our marching orders directly on this particular set of funds from the US Treasury, who trickles those rules down to JB McCusky, who's our main point of contact, the state auditor. He has given us guidance on what we, he and his office have given us guidance on what we can spend it on and what we can't. And I know there are some interpretations out there from different entities and different folks saying we can spend it on basically whatever we want, but that's simply not the case. case, at least as of right now. And that, those rules may change in the future, I don't know. But as of now, as Commissioner Skor indicated, we have our guidelines of the water, sewer, and broadband. And so at this time, we're, we're inclined to follow in line with the rules as we're ultimately the ones that are accountable for those funds. So as always, as Commissioner Skor indicated, we, we are open to entertain proposals from any group in Montague County for funding requests. We have different times of the year we do that, but we'll certainly listen at any time. And so if there are specific proposals, please bring them forward and we'll give them proper attention that we do any proposal that comes before us. And that's really all I have.
I just want to reiterate what the two county commissioners have said, that we're going to follow the federal guidelines and then the guidelines given to us by JB McCuskey, who is the state auditor. I look at this, this, it would be nice to be a wish list, but this is not a wish list. There are specific guidelines. I think 25 pages was the short version of understanding how we could use the funds. And I agree with my colleagues that this is for economic development and for a larger future projects. We are given this money a one-time amount. And I really believe what we have done is, we've always continued to say that if anyone has a proposal, they could come before here. We, I believe we've received a couple of proposals that we will evaluate clearly. Everything will be as is done through Open Gov, that you can see how we are going to follow the rules and the regulations. And we look forward to hearing from anyone who has specific proposals. But this is a government that, the three of us are a republic type of government, that we are elected to make those decisions. And I believe we've been doing properly. And for example, and I will use this, with the loss of Blacksville Number Two Mine and Mylan, most areas probably would not be able to survive. And we are preparing, and as you said, we're very deliberate in what we do. And we look forward to explaining what we are doing. And I'm very proud of the three of us and how we are dealing with this very carefully.
Anything else, Jeff?
No.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.